I want to take the opportunity, given that we have members of the press. Here today to say a couple of bullet points about Florida State University in general. We are, we are a university on the rise. We've gone up 25 places in the rankings recently, a top 20 university. We've improved on pretty much every metric that you could ever imagine the last two years. Under my presidency, our freshman retention rate is among the best in the country. We have the same graduation rate for students. Whether you come from a privileged environment or whether you come from a challenged environment and won the A P L U award a couple of years ago for student success. We are leading the country in student success. We have one of the lowest costs, one of the lowest debt for our students. Providing access to the university and as a first generation student myself, we have over 25% of our students are first generation. So. We're a very special university in many ways. In athletics, we, we also are, have an amazing university. Our goal, as I always tell A D Alford, is to win a championship in every single sport. And we're investing in that way. And that is our goal. From our football team. Who 10-3 last year and to women's basketball, who were a couple of injuries away from going deep into the tournament. To women's softball, who were in the national championship and women's soccer, who were in the college cup as a couple of good examples. This year is a, we have a lot of optimism about our amazing football team, a great coach. Great returning group of people, student athletes, and we couldn't be more excited by that. Our Florida State University fans are among the best in the country. I don't remember the exact number off A D Alford will correct me. 60% or 65% of our fans travel over 300 miles to watch a home game. Every home game. That's absolutely incredible. Our, our viewership from 2012 to 22. We had 25 regular season games with over 4 million viewers, which is a hallmark. In the media rights industry and we're 12th in the nation in terms of the average regular season viewership. We, we have an average viewership of 3.2 million viewers on average. We're one of the best. Media valued teams in the United States. We, in many ways, along with, I'll just say Clemson and others, but helped to carry the value. Of the media rights in the ACC. No offense to my colleagues, but that's just the, that's just the numbers. And that's because we have some of the greatest fans in the entire world and the storied tradition of Florida State University. We currently, as you all know, face a very difficult situation. We, we are seeing large media. Deals that have been made with places like the Big Ten and the S C C. Which in many ways are creating. Maybe it's an exaggeration, but an existential crisis perhaps for Florida State University. As we will be $30 million per school, per year behind. In our gap in conference distribution. With our, with, you know, contractual. With contracts that are said to go through 2036. So this current situation presents a very difficult situation for us. Because we are investing in things like football. Football, basketball bring in the most revenue, which actually supports all the rest of the sports. Without increasing revenue, we will face major challenges in being able to compete. In football, as you know, the landscape is changing dramatically with. Our ability to compete in NIL, coaching salaries. And attractive facilities to, to continue to build our brand and be competitive. And by the way, the waterfall of revenue falls down to support things like women's soccer and women's softball. So our title nuns. Sports will be and could be completely affected in a very dramatic way. We, of course, are not satisfied with our current situation. We. Love the ACC. We love our partners at ESPN. We, our goal would be to continue to stay in the ACC. But staying in the ACC under the, the, the current situation. Is, is hard for us to figure out. How we remain competitive unless there were a major change. In the revenue distribution within the conference, in the ACC conferences itself. That has not happened. We have those discussions are ongoing at all times. And continue to explore that, that situation. F S U helps to drive value and will drive value for any partner and. But we have spent. A year trying to understand how we might fix the issue. There are no easy fixes to this problem. This challenge, but we, a group of us, many of us have spent literally a year. Chairman Collins, you can ask Chairman Collins, he'll tell you it's been a year. That we've spent on this and we've explored every possible option. That you could imagine, because all options are on the table, as A D offered said many, many times to the press. And to the ACC. And we continue to explore all of those options. The issue at hand is, you know, what can we do to. Allow ourselves to be competitive in football and get what I think, you know. Selfishly, is the revenue that we deserve in our media situation. I think this continues to be a very difficult issue. There's a lot going on in the world of conference. Realignment, the, with the PAC deal imminent. And lots of, lots of things are going on. I would have to say that my current assessment of the situation after very deep analysis. Is that I believe that F S U will have to, at some point. Consider very seriously leaving the ACC unless. There were a radical change to the revenue distribution. I don't think this is anything that anybody hasn't necessarily thought of. But I wanted to make, make that statement to the board and, and happy to. Discuss it with you. In this forum and answer any questions. That you might have. Maybe I'll just ask A D Alford if there's anything that you think I may have not. Said that would be important at this juncture. Or anything you want to add quickly before we open it up for questions.
A D Alford?
No, sir. I, I think you've stated the facts and our, and gave the conversations that we've had over the last year. Evaluating all of our options and the only thing I would add is this tell. How deep we have gone into the research and with partners that we have gone out and spoken with. To get all the facts, figures of all of our options and have really evaluated them to our best.
Chairman Collins, that, that is my report and happy to entertain questions if you want me to.
I'm, I'm sure the trustees are going to want to ask some questions after that. And I'm happy to help facilitate that. Does anybody have any comments or questions of. The president or the athletic director on what the president just talked about?
Chairman?
Yeah, trustee Weatherford?
Well, the, the question I had is actually a question that you answered. So my, my line of questioning will probably be more of a statement. But I was going to ask the question to the president, to the chairman and the rest of the board. Simple question, fundamental question. Do we want to play games moving forward or do we want to compete? It's a really simple question and I think I know the answer. From, from the board. And, you know, I thought the president did a really good job of laying out. The state of play that we're currently in, but I've thought about this a lot as an ex-player, as now board trustee member. And the simple fact is the cost of playing at the highest level. Is outpacing the ACC's ability to compete on a regular basis. I mean, it just is. And if you go back and look at. How many wins ACC schools have had in the college football playoff, right? Who other than Clemson has had, you know, meaningful wins, right? I mean, it's. It's not like we have to look into the future to be concerned. We're living in the present and there's reasons to be concerned about our ability to compete. Year in and year out and on, you know. And some of those costs are really interesting that may not be apparent, but. Cost of NIL is a negative 10 to 15% outside of the athletic department, right? Money is going to be flowing outside of athletics. Into collectives. Coaches salaries have increased almost 10% year over year for a decade. A D Alfred, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was 15% last year.
Yes, sir.
The cost of facilities, what it cost Clemson to build their football only facility a few years ago is going to cost 30 to 40% more. For us building ours. I know. Chairman is laughing because he's in the middle of all of this. And meanwhile, not only does the S C C and Big Ten have such an advantage today, as those conferences continue to get bigger, their TV. Their next TV deal comes up before our TV deal, guys. So they're going to pull further ahead. When they cut their new deal now that Oklahoma and Texas are in the S C C and USC and UCLA are in the Pac 12. And, you know, the, the president threw out the $30 million number. That's a big number, but multiply that by 13 years. We're talking about over $400 million. Difference between what we're going, the deficit between us and the school down the road. Not to mention a bunch of schools north of us, right? We're surrounded by schools that are going to have a $400 million advantage. And that's $400 million. They're going to be able to invest into all of their athletic programs. Not to mention, it's $400 million. They don't have to go out and raise. Right from their boosters. Which the way, if you play this out, that's $400 million. That's technically, I'm not saying it's all going to end up in the collective, but. $400 million that they're not taking from their booster base and their alumni base that technically. Let's say 10% of that falls into the collective. That's a big number. That's going to be a really, really. Difficult thing to overcome. And I do think it's an existential threat. I'll use myself as, as an example. Just to like play this out from a narrative standpoint. I was the most diehard F S U guy in the world. Growing up, Coach Bowden came and spoke in my church and I was a kid. I told everybody in the neighborhood for 10 years, that's what I was going to go do. I got offered. I didn't take any official visits. I committed early, started recruiting and went. If all of a sudden, some other school offered me a million dollars to go play there. Unfortunately, I wouldn't have been a Seminole, right? And honestly, I don't think anyone. You know, if it was $100,000 or $50,000 would be one thing, but we're talking about. You know, six figures, in some cases, seven-figure deals. To go play. And that's what we're up against. You know, you can have a kid just like me today. And then there's going to be a school, many, many schools, you know. Almost 40 to be exact, that are going to have way more resources than us. And so I do think it's an existential threat. And this is just one board member speaking, unless something drastic changes on the revenue side at the ACC, it's not a matter of. If we leave, in my opinion, it's a matter of how and when. We leave, you know, and not everyone may agree with that. But I feel really strongly about it because I don't want to play games. I want to go compete for championships. Moving forward, that's what Florida State is about. And unfortunately. We're in a situation where money matters more than ever and you cannot compete without the resources necessary. So I apologize for the long diatribe, but obviously I feel passionate about this and. And agree wholeheartedly with your comments, Mr. President.
Anybody else have any comments? Yes, trustee De La Squevas Diaz.
Peter, can you hear me?
Yes.
So, hard to follow Drew, but I'll try. I don't disagree with Drew. I guess obviously. Learning from a different angle and maybe with the legal hat, it's just. One side of me just doesn't understand how the ACC doesn't get. The, the, the risk of, of us having to do what we don't want to do, in my opinion. No, I don't think anybody at this table. Wants to be in this position to have to take the decision to, to go where we have to go. But, and then the other thing I do want to say is, I, I, I do, we all know, I love football. But we all love our sports. So this is not a football decision. This is an athletic decision. And as much as it would hurt football, it would hurt all of our athletes. As much as our men, it would hurt our women. And, you know, our women have been. Incredible, particularly always been these last few years and, and we would hurt them. And as we all know, I think the other piece to this that, that has been very interesting to me is that. We're also competing always from a state school disadvantage. And what do I mean by that? You know, we are capped. As much as we have great legislatures and as much as they give us the money that they can. We compete with private schools that have huge budgets. So we have those pockets that we can't even compete with and yet we do an amazing job. So facilities, as expensive as Drew's saying, to just build new facilities. It's just as expensive to maintain what we have and we know we have facilities that we even have to start from scratch. So having this deficit, although it's huge because of what we're talking about, but we are also looking at. At things that are just astronomical to begin with, to keep our athletic facilities at par without doing anything major. You know, to me, it's just. I guess to me, it's just sad to have this conversation. And then part of it is, is as a fiduciary to this university, it's how do we do this eloquently, properly? And ensure that we put Florida State in the best hands possible. When, and if we have to exit because we can't make it work, we just have to make sure. We, we do what's right by this university.
Thank you, trustee De La Squevas Diaz. Appreciate it. Trustee Alvarez?
I'll, I'll make it very quick. Sports is no longer an extracurricular activity at the university level. It's big business. So if you want to participate in big business, you need to invest accordingly. So we need to do whatever is necessary. First of all, we need to make the decision, we want to be in this business or not. And if we decide to be in this business, then we have to proceed accordingly that we have to face it. This is big, big investments and that's what it requires. So. If, if we don't do that, then we'll just make the decision that we're not in it. But this is big business. It's no longer a sport. It has nothing to do with the game. This is a, this is a big business and this is an investment. So. Nothing for you to say, just something simple.
Trustee Sergeant?
Yes, I, I think that we should really just believe in ourselves and our team and our coach and our program. I think we were all a little skeptical and, and shell shocked in the beginning, but we have seen proof. Of the system that we have. It's a great one. And as much as we would hate to make some of these types of decisions, it's with sadness that we do. We don't want to have to do that, but we also have to do. We have to keep our lifeline going. And so we have to do what we have to do, but it would be with. You know, very humbly in a, in a way that we don't want to have to do this, but we have to do what it takes to compete. We just need to believe in ourselves and what we have. If, if this is a game of chicken, I hope it's not. But I think we have a great team and a great program and it's. It's, it's going to, it's resilient because of. The attitude of the coach, Coach Norvell, all hats off to him. And we just need to make the decisions we have to make that are, are best, put the mask on ourselves.
Thank you. Trustee Roth?
Thanks, Chairman. And, and thank you and thank you to President McCullough and, and A D Alfred. You guys have. Over this last year, done an amazing job of both identifying the problem and, and really tackling this head on and, and trying to fix the problem, both internally. In the ACC and exploring other options. And I know it's been a lot of work and, and. I for one, and I think a lot of people on the board and probably you guys as well, would have liked to seen a solution already. Under the current framework of the ACC, but I think as time has gone on, it seems more and more likely that. A solution under the current TV deal and, and, and within the ACC is probably very unlikely. And so it kind of leads us to, to what's next and. You know, as, as President McCullough said, there is no perfect answer and there is no perfect solution here. And. I think we would all love if every single plan aligned perfectly and tomorrow our TV contract ended and. All three conferences or four conferences were offering us a deal and we could figure out what we want to do, but no matter. What we do. That timing's not going to, that's not going to line up. And so. I think for us, the alternative of just staying in this conference for the next 13 years and trying to wait for that perfect alignment of, of. Of the stars is, is the equivalent of, of a death by a thousand cuts. And each cut is a $30 million cut over the next 13 years. And it's one thing to take a $30 million cut last year. It's another to take another one this year, but to do this for 13 years, as was pointed out, this isn't just about football. We have some of the best women's athletics, some of the best non-revenue generating athletics. That'll take a hit. And so I, I, I think just continuing on this path of trying to get the absolute perfect deal. Is going to get tougher and tougher and, and just waiting is, is not the answer. I gotta be honest with you, I think it's not just applying to us, but the ACC as a whole, if the entire conference for the next 13 years. Every single one of those schools is taking this same hit for the next 13 years. When the next TV contract comes up, we will be a third-rate conference at that point. And so waiting this out and hoping that we get another contract that, that's, that's good in 13 years, whether it's us. Or one of the other schools in the ACC is, is crazy. It's just not going to be there. And so I, I know we're running into a deadline of August 15th. I think it would be ideal if we could come up with something before that. Probably unlikely. I, I don't know. I don't know the details. But I don't think it, it, it's unrealistic for us to say as a goal for this, this board and, and. You, President McCullough and, and A D Alfred, that if we don't have something now, that within the next 12 months, we have an exit plan and we execute on it. Whether it's the perfect solution or Plan B or Plan C, but I think our goal as a university should be. To, to figure out how we exit this TV deal that we currently have in the next 12 months.
Thank you. Trustee Sasser?
Yeah, I just, everyone said all the, all the things that I could think to say, but the president laid, laid it out right in the beginning very well and. And others have shared the same thoughts. We've been talking about this for a year, Peter, and. We haven't made any progress. And I think we just have to assume that it's, it's the next move. In our court, basically trustee Roth said it very well. We, we, we need a plan to do it, but. It, it's not, we're $30 million a year at a disadvantage against the S C C and the Big Ten. We've done a tremendous job with great administration, terrific coaches, great athletic department. I think other than the $30 million shortfall from the ACC, we're doing pretty well. On the other revenue parts of our, of our sport. So it's not a downfall on, on, on F S U and Seminole boosters and alumni and fans and. And the administration is, is the $30 million bad deal that we've got another 13 years on. So we have to get out of that deal. I, I agree with trustee Roth too. The other universities probably ought to be thinking the same way. And, you know, I, I want to compete at the highest level, trustee Weatherford, just like we always have. And frankly, we don't fill the stadium today except when we play Florida or we play Miami. Or when, you know, the LSU game in Orlando is going to be packed, oversold. We, we deserve to play the best and we deserve to play them on, on, even on a level field. So. That's my thoughts on it. Mr. President. Thanks for laying it out that way. I think everyone has the right thoughts on this. We know where we are. We've been talking about it for a year. And we need to do something different. It's not going to change otherwise. Thank you.
Who else? Trustee Gonzalez?
You know, as trustees, we're fiduciaries of the university first and foremost, which really means we have to do what's in the best interest of the university. To me, it's not personal. Towards the ACC. It's not personal towards any of the sister universities in the conference, but we have a major math problem. It's not a subjective assessment. It's a major math problem. And that problem really affects our student athletes and our coaches the most. Who work so hard at representing us. So from my perspective, 100% support the president and the A D. In terms of us pursuing all options. So from my perspective, 100% support that perspective. Thank you. Thank you.
Trustee Henderson?
Think some of the really great things said, but if you look at the fiduciary responsibility mentioned. The fact that Title IX kind of goes out the door to F S U. If you look at our national championships in soccer and softball and our, and, and our. Non-revenue sports and that Michael and others have built up so well, you know, they're going to be the first in the way. Of trying to deal with a budget that would not enable those sports to exist. So this is not just our revenue sports. It's, it's our entire athletic program. It goes without saying, but. I think in terms of soliciting views and looking at this initiative, it's broader than. The, the revenue sport.
I, I, I agree with that.
Chairman, Chairman Collins, it's John Deal. I, I would just add one thing. We've built the legacy. We've earned the right. Our media presence, our ability to put eyeballs on games and create. Unique experiences nationwide, not just in the state of Florida. It's just, we've earned the right. So we would all, you know, again, as a fiduciary. We would be falling down our job if we didn't capitalize on the legacy that was built by so many before us.
Well said. Well said. As you know, you know, the president and A D Alfred have been working on this every single day. We've. We can, then we're probably going to come back to you pretty soon with, with some, some, some more conversation on this. It, it's tough in the, in the public environment. You know, we had a room full of people there. I'm sure there's a bunch of people on. On the simulcast. You wouldn't, you know, it'd be tough to run up any other kind of company like this. But we're going to, so I, I know I can't update you all as much as possible, but A D Alfred can. And, and the president can, and we stay within the sunshine. But I'm, I'm personally, and I said this last night in some comments that I made. I am personally really proud of A D Alfred and the president for the, for the work that they put in this last year. And have a wavered a bit in making sure that Florida State was. You know, the most important thing to take care of. And, you know, we've taken some hits on that. We've taken some hits from some of our sister institutions and brother institutions in the, in the ACC and other people. I don't know what they want us to do though. We got, you know, it's, 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 we gotta, we gotta fight for ourselves. And I thought. You know, we, I thought you put it great, trustee Weatherford. I think that we don't want to play games. We want to compete. We can compete. We are competing, but when the gap gets that big. You know, as I said before, it, it's insurmountable. I think I said at the last meeting in February, I said it's almost impossible and A D Alfred said it's impossible. And he wasn't wrong. And so. Um, and he wasn't wrong. And so, um. They're focused on it and I'm focused on it with them and, um, we're, I appreciate everybody's comments, I appreciate that, you know. The, the, the thoughts on the university and, and what we want to do and, uh, I think that there's. Pretty clear alignment between the AD and, and the board and, and the president on this. And so, uh. We're working hard on it, as you know, um, and, uh, we'll be back to you. Could be sooner rather than later.
Mr., Mr. Chairman, may I make one more?
Yes, I'm sorry, I, I didn't mean to cut it off, but I was going to give you and, uh, try, AD offered a, a last shot here.
No, it's a, it was perfect timing, thank you. Um, I just want to pick up on one of the, the points that was made by trustee Sasser. Um, you know, I, I don't know if this board knows it or not, but, uh, the booster organization. Is, is the, uh, is one of the best fundraising, uh, booster organizations in the entire country. It's a, it's a model. As we go around other universities, uh, they hear about, we hear about them emulating. Uh, what we've done and what, uh. AD Alfred and Stephen Ponder built up and the team is really truly, uh, amazing. And then I could show you. Uh, a list of universities that are, you know, football powerhouses and, and we way outraise them. In terms of what the boosters contribute. So in the last 12 years, um, this year, the boosters raised more money. In the history, uh, in the, since we've been keeping track of it in the last 12 years. Um, uh. Yeah, you, there was one year that, uh, when Michael was in charge of it, there's just a couple million dollars less, very close. Uh, so I don't want to take that away from you, but, uh, they had, uh, a record, a record year. So it's not like. To trustee Sasser's, uh, point, which is a really important one. It's not like they're raising $10 million a year. Uh, and then we can, we have 70 million that we're leaving on the table, they raised 77.7 million dollars this year. Which is incredible. And so, you know, I think, uh, maybe we can do more, but it's not like we're going to. Be able to raise an extra $60 million on top of that. So it's a great point by you, uh, trustee Sasser, uh, I think that's important. Um, and, and one of the reasons it's so important is because, like you said. It's not like we're leaving a lot of money on the table. Here that we can just go after and, and, and the things that we, the opportunities that we have to make more revenue for athletics. We're all over that. Uh, and, and have a plan. Uh, so we're working on that as well. But first, thank you all very much, uh, to the trustees for all your, uh, uh, comments, I really appreciate it and. And thank you for, uh, all of your support. Uh, so thank you, Mr. Chairman, allowing me to make a few more comments.
Great, thanks, Mr. President. Uh, AD Alfred, you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, I, I really want, thank you, Chairman. I really want to point out and tell you how much I appreciate the comments. That were made, but truly appreciate the recognition of the other 19 sports. Uh, the other 18 sports, our, our female athletes, um. Because we pride ourselves in having the very best resources, providing the very best student athlete experience. Uh, that we possibly can, uh, that we're here in an educational mission. Uh, to guide these, these students, um, to perform in the classroom. To perform in their sports, uh, to go out, perform in the community and represent us well. And really guide them so when they go back to their hometowns, they're going to be great citizens. Um, and, and have that learning experience because this is the most impressionable time of their lives. It's why they're in college and without those resources to provide these opportunities for them. We would be failing in our mission. And I just want to really thank the board for pointing that out, for recognizing how important that is. Uh, for all of our sports, that we're able to provide these, these winning edge resources to them in life. And with that, it comes with financial responsibility that we need to provide.
Great, I appreciate the comments. Uh, anybody else before we, um, move on from this? Uh, like I said, we'll be back to you. Perhaps sooner rather than later, um, but, uh, we'll be back to you soon. Um. I, uh, I'm going to just open it up to the trustees, anybody have any, anything else that they want to talk about, anything you want to? Anything bothering you? A- anything that you, uh, didn't feel like I said today? Okay, um, before we adjourn, here's a list of upcoming dates, obviously Labor Day weekend, FSU, uh, LSU, it's a, it's a Board of Trustees away game, so you guys have all gotten packets from them. Uh, from Heather on that, we're all looking forward to it. Um. Uh, I know I am. Uh, the, our next regular in-person meeting. Is going to be Thursday and Friday, September 7th and 8th, that's the Southern Miss game weekend. Uh, we'll meet on Friday, November, um, 10th. And, uh, for in Tallahassee, it's a one day, we'll do a one day. Um. Meeting like we did before, and that's the Miami game. Uh, the reason why we were going to do one day is it's, uh. I think that's Veterans Day and, and the university's closed and so, um, it's difficult to get a couple days there. Um, but we needed to have the meeting for, for different reasons. Uh, the Board of Governors trustee summit and BOG meeting will take place, uh, November 8th and 9th, uh, on UCS campus. Remember the BOG, uh. They, they like the trustees to come to the trustee summit. Um, I'm just going to leave it at that. Um, do with that what you will. Um. BOG, uh, and the, um, we'll follow up with some details, uh, registration details later. Uh, the spring meeting dates in Tallahassee are January 31st and February 1st. Um, that, as we discussed at the last meeting, that coincides with the Seminole evening reception and FSU day at the Capitol. Where I'm going to impose on you again to, to go around and, and. And knock on some legislators' doors, uh, during session. Um, but we'll, and we're going to, uh, we're still working on details. Uh, I know there's a couple of you active with Heather and Marissa and Jimmy on details for the spring retreat. Um, and so I appreciate your efforts there and, and we'll be back to you probably at the next meeting where we'll have a little bit more detail. Um, thanks to the staff for preparing our meeting this week, I know it was a pretty quick agenda, um, and, but it was a lot of work. You know, there's been months and, and tons of hours that have gone into that legislative budget request, uh, months that have gone into the whole. Um, plane and, and DSO discussion, um, and, uh, I do appreciate. General Counsel Egan boning up on her, uh, unknown law. Um, and I just, uh, again, I appreciate the time that everybody puts into it. Um. You know, there's a lot at stake and we're all Knowles and, uh, we want the best for the university and I just appreciate the passion and I appreciate. The effort that you all, uh, bring to it every day. Uh, but if there's nothing further, um, then we will, uh, adjourn the meeting and, uh. We'll see you, uh, at LSU. Thank you.